All right, it's six o'clock, let's get started, we'll say the pledge.
Collectively to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got everybody here minus John. Still out recovering, so we've got corn tonight. Okay, so on to the regular agenda here, we've got a couple of changes on this one tonight. So number nine on the agenda is out, we're not going to deal with that this evening. And we're adding thirteen and fourteen, a letter of credit requirement for subdivisions, that's number thirteen. Number fourteen is the alternate detour route, we're gonna have a conversation about that.
So the thirteen fourteen are just gonna bump down to fifteen sixteen and that's over?
They're already reflected in the, I think they're, you're using the.
Oh, this is the updated.
That's the old agenda, there was updated one with highlight and marks, so if you look at the SharePoint.
Oh, the SharePoint.
Yeah. And copies of them are at the door too.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any other changes or mods or?
Motion to approve the agenda.
With this set of changes?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does it first and Brian does the second, say all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, okay. Consent agenda, vendor invoices, pledge report, don't think there's anything in there, Brent, that we needed to discuss some further?
Uh, yeah, questions about the cash counter electric, so those are costs for all the lights in the city?
Yes.
That we pay for?
Lights or lift stations, things like that.
Okay.
We're working through updating how all the items are actually billed towards the appropriate accounts before it wasn't broken out to business sewer, business streets.
Sure, sure.
And we're working hard to actually itemize those items, that's where actually true cost to the appropriate areas compared to what was done in the past, is my understanding. Also, there's one other item on the vendor invoice not reflect on, I don't believe it's reflected on here, council approved it. Or heard about this at the last meeting for the Eagle Skull project, the cost for those trees, so they could get submitted for a grant reimbursement. Is to Ole's Nursery for six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, so I just want to make sure that that would include that request. I don't believe it's reflected in the vendor invoices though. And as I've mentioned previous times, that's a lot more detailed breakdown of how you have it, because we're starting to try to use Black Mountain.
Yeah.
To reflect this more accurately for you.
That's cool to be able to see all the detail of all the different lift stations, for example.
Yep.
Yep.
We're charged for it, that's great.
Okay, guys, any other questions or on that, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the app that Brian was talking about, okay? If he makes a motion, can I get a second?
Do a second.
Brian does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very motion carries. Okay, the minutes.
I did not have any questions on it.
Okay, well somebody's got some corrections they want to do on the minutes, I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Brian makes a motion to approve. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, all right, here to the point, no public comments, does anybody have any comments you wanna? Yes ma'am, I'm gonna bring you up to the microphone, I gotta bring you up to the microphone though. I know, I know.
Thank you, by the way.
What?
Thank you.
Two questions.
Cool.
The minutes used to be published in the paper all the time, and maybe you discussed this in a meeting I missed, are they not being published anymore?
We are going to be having them published, we had, with the changes in staff, they will be published in the paper, so.
Cause I didn't see them all winter.
They, they weren't published all winter, okay, we will look into.
Cause I missed a whole bunch of meetings.
Yeah, we will look into it.
So if you need, they're posted on the website, so they're all past minutes.
I know, but I usually look at all the legal, so.
They're available.
I'm one of those people that reads the paper.
Good point, good point.
You're the last ones, right?
I know, what can I say?
But we will look into it and get back with you on that, and if you need a copy of them, we'll give you copies, so.
Uh, the other thing, a concern, and I know my daughter also emailed, about the kids crossing across traffic with all the increased traffic that is up and down Maine. And kids are darting between the cars, so is anything being done to put temporary stop sign, something?
You mean at the crosswalk? Which?
They are darting across the street wherever.
Oh, okay.
You know, cause there isn't anything designated really except for a couple of stop signs on the road, but there's nothing for the through. And the traffic is going through, they're darting over to get to the other side of the road, so they can go.
So you're talking on Cheyenne?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we at, the school has a designated crosswalk with the signals and everything.
Essentially, they're not, they're not going.
But if they live on the other side.
Yeah, you're talking like center or park.
Yeah, they have to dart across, well even up here by Willow Court, they dart across.
Yeah, that's probably what I think.
Which are, but they're, we've, I've seen them, my daughter's seen them too, they're darting across the road.
Well, yeah, they don't really have a choice because you're not gonna walk all the way to the freeway stop.
But are we gonna wait till somebody gets hit?
It's a good point.
That's our concern.
Yeah, but where can we put it, that's, I guess that's my question, is where can we put something, but the only place we have some good crosswalks is right there by Big Erbs. That's about the only place we could potentially put something.
Jimmy, you got any ideas on that one?
Well, we tried last year with the Main Street Initiative, putting in a temporary bulb out to kind of bring the pedestrian traffic closer to the driving lane, and that kind of was received so-so, I guess at best.
We got more negative feedback than we got positive feedback, but it was more of the drivers that were complaining, not necessarily the pedestrians.
It kind of choked off the intersection.
Pedestrians like it, but the drivers hate it.
Yeah, and at four o'clock every day just outside the office, I see the kindred school bus dropping off at the senior center, and they use center to cross over, so I think there is some merit in exploring. It's striped right now, it's got the pedestrian facilities on it, it just.
Essentially putting up some different flashing lights or.
Yeah.
Like pedestrian right away.
Could we put up the blinker thing again, like halfway through town?
Yeah.
You know, so that people who would, hey, wait a minute here, it's only twenty-five.
Yeah, I know, that's another thing.
That would be the easy, we could, easier request for the county to go put that.
I mean, I'd like to see if we were gonna do something like that, maybe like pedestrian activated crossing sign.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not the same time, it's just, it's lit, you push the button, then the lights come on and you cross at that point.
So we did, it's basically just signage across there that says, when flashing, you know, traffic has to yield to pedestrians.
Yeah, yeah. And they, they're, they are not inexpensive, I mean, they cost money, but.
Everything costs money, you know, it doesn't matter what we talk about.
It's a safety thing.
I don't disagree, yeah.
Kids, especially, they're getting dropped off, if that's what the bus drop off is for all those kids in that area, then it's only a matter of time, something happens.
Okay, cause there'll be more of it, Russ, you had a question?
They have a neat system on Eighth Street in Moria, it isn't flashing yellow lights.
It's a stoplight.
It's a stoplight, it, when, when the college kids are crossing, they push the button, and it goes to a stoplight.
Yeah. It's a haw light.
It's a hawk.
They're really common on your retrofit, large suburban roads, but don't have the means to condense the road, they're, they're really effective.
They have it on downtown Fargo by FMCT as well, it's nice, I, I overlook.
It really is.
Yeah, I almost think something like that.
What do they call, what's the?
Hawk, they're a hawk system.
Okay.
What we'll do is, Jim and I will coordinate with the county and see if there's any options, since it's a county road, we really.
Right, that's, it's county road.
Uh, but we'll talk with the county, we'll meet with them and report back.
Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
Very quickly, just to back up and imply, as I've been going down to a hundred to go onto the interstate, a lot of people are pushing the way over the twenty-five, and I've talked in forty plus.
They're doing the same thing all the way around their detour, trust me.
That's what I'm talking about, and then he right by the trailer court this morning, I was passed, and he was easily doing forty plus. And right there in that trailer park area, you know, there's kids there.
Yep, and that's the thing is, the deputies be like shooting ducks in a barrel, and everybody's driving too fast, they need to slow down, and that's.
Well, are we ticking?
Yeah.
Have they?
You know, still.
I know, I know, I know, it's just.
You got one, and then a hundred, go.
I know.
But that's why people just need to slow down, because that's, an accident's gonna happen sooner or later, and it's just because everybody's impatient this summer, and they need to slow down, so. But yeah, why don't you guys talk to the county, we can do, I think it's a county road, we wanna make sure we're there okay with that, so.
Good suggestion, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Dave?
Yeah, I don't have too much, I appreciate Brent moving that road closed sign, it was in the wrong position, and you moved it, thank you. The only thing I noticed on eighty-first Avenue now, that road closed sign, was somebody taking it away, so therefore, when we're going down, I was sitting to the, with the deputy here tonight. She, I was working in the yard, she pulled in, we counted like fifteen, eighteen cars probably in thirty-five, forty minutes, and I don't have a problem if they're using it, a lot of it for the local people. But the road condition, there's a lot of washboarding in it now, and they put that stuff on it, if it rains again, you probably need some gravel, and I hope Northern Improvement will do it for you, so the city of Horace doesn't have to have that cost, but. The road needs to be improved a little.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't really have any other things other than, I'm wondering how much special assessments the city, we're gonna get on that roundabout, and I know you guys are working on it, you're working with the city. You're working with the city, the school, the federal, but I would think when you start a little project like this, you must have an idea how much special assessments you're gonna be carrying, you know, and pass back to the city.
We have, we're almost done with your questions from the last time, and that should answer some of your concerns.
Okay, and then we'll address that, I'll come to your office, and then I'll sit down and ask those fifteen questions, I guess.
Yeah, so we have that, and then as for the road closed sign, road closed sign is, we'll inform the contractor tomorrow, we meet with the contractor every Tuesday. To inform him about that, there are some other signs that they didn't do yet, so we're gonna work with them on that.
There was one there, and it tipped over in the wind, and I ran across someone, and I said, well, I'll just put it up, they said, no, you probably shouldn't touch it, you gotta have the, the sign people put it up. You know, I mean, it ain't too hard to lift up a little sign and put a couple things there.
Yeah.
But I mean, you, I think you still have a road closed sign at the other end.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring it forward to them.
Yeah, it's not a big thing, it would stop a little bit of the traffic there, and I mean, they did that frost boil, they got that working pretty good, there's a little soft spot yet, but it's a lot better, so appreciate the effort.
Yeah. All right, anybody else got anything they wanna talk about, or? Okay, we'll move on to number seven here, Parkview, Lucas, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the first item I have is a replat and sale agreement between the city and the park board. This is in regard to lot twelve block four Prairie View addition, so if you'll remember, that's the lot in Prairie View that, it looks like a capital I. The park district is still unsatisfied with that lot, so we met with the lead officials of the various departments, planning commission, city council, and the president of the park board. And tried to put together a proposal on what is the best solution to remedy the issue with that lot, it was determined that the park board should, or could replat the property. And then sell those lots and use the, the funds through that lot sale for regional park improvements, because there are now larger parks in this area. That they could use those funds to put infrastructure to those parks other than just dot parks in all departments. So what this agreement does is it outlines the city's responsibilities and obligations, and then the park districts as well. The reason that the city is involved in this is because on the plat dedication in Prairie View, the city actually owns half of the lot. So the city has a half interest in it, and the park board has a half interest in that lot, so what this proposal does is the city will execute a quick lane deed to the park board. And then that will give the park board full ownership in that lot, they can then work with the city to go through the replat process. And then replat this into, right now, the way it lies, it's a proposed five lots, four of the lots being residential, sellable lots, the fifth lot being. Basically a storm sewer drainage ditch lot that's already in place, so this agreement also just says that the park district will dedicate that lot back to the city, so then the city can maintain that lot. So that's the middle strip that's in there, that just acts as a storm sewer drainage right now. So if you look under section two, that outlines the procedure from start to finish on making this happen. Section three is the city's obligation, so as, as far as the city council is concerned, that's the main stuff you're gonna wanna look at to ensure that the city's okay with this proposal. The big one being section three, subsection D, so in that one, it says that the city council agrees to work with the county to waive penalties and interest on special assessments owed on the property. Uh, right now, there's approximately three thousand dollars in penalties and interest on that lot for special assessments that have not been paid.
So, cause park district hasn't paid that, or?
That is correct, and so I've, I've done this in the past with other cities and worked with the county, and it's basically up to those two entities if they're willing to waive the interest and penalties on the specials that are owed.
So that, that's three thousand dollars just in penalties?
And interest.
Or in interest, or above what they actually owe for specials?
Correct, and that's over three years.
I think what we agreed to do is have that conversation with the county and get that waived, I mean, that's kind of what we were talking about.
Cause, cause right now it's.
Well, well, the thing is, is that, okay, so does that mean that that drainage area, they're gonna fill that in and sell lots on that, I don't understand.
No.
The city will be dedicated that, that strip.
There's other lots there, if you look at the map.
So if you go to exhibit D, or excuse me, exhibit A, that's the proposed, what the development might look like. If you keep scrolling down, there, there you go, so yeah, that's what it looks like right now, and that middle portion is what is being utilized as storm sewer drainage.
So right now, all five of these are owned by the city and park board?
Correct, each, each entity has a half interest in, that's all one lot right now, I just went through and.
This is, this is basically splitting these up into.
Yeah, I played engineer for a day, and that's the result of me trying.
So stay with your career professional, okay?
That's what you can stay with words. Numbers are not my thing.
So then the ones in yellow.
Are the ones that they potentially sell.
Right. To someone to build a house on.
Correct.
And so yes, it'll still have to go through, it still has to go through the city council, what I want to do is.
What's that?
Yeah, and so they'll, part of this agreement says that they'll work with the city engineer and the city attorney to go through the plating process.
Yep.
But yeah, we just felt like this was the, the best approach for the park board to move forward with this.
Yeah, we met with the park board on this one, and said they, they were okay with it.
Who made the request, is it the developer, or is it the park board, or?
So I had discussions with the park board over this lot, and the concern of, of what can they, can they not do with this lot? And so then it proceeded to, well, what if you tried this option, are you okay with that?
I think the general discussion was, if these aren't paid, these lots defer back to us, city.
Yeah, that member started, Brent, did they start with talking to you, or?
They were gonna let them defer back, and then they had issues with bonding, potentially.
Yeah, that's where it started, yeah.
Yeah.
They didn't want them, and you can look at the site and see, it, it really isn't a great layout.
Oh, I, I can't disagree, I mean, it's horrible, it's.
Yeah.
It's basically unusable.
Correct, so this came out to be probably the best plan to come up with, and everybody kind of, it's a way to seal the deal and finish this thing, it's been ongoing for a while now.
Yes, specials get paid, you know, you better put up to date, hold that.
Yeah, everything gets up to date.
So the reason that, that this is presented to you today, is because I want there to be no questions on what, what is actually going on with this, I want, I mean, it's my desire that the city council approves this tonight. Park board approves it at their May twenty-ninth meeting, and that way, it's, it's in paper.
Get this done.
Like, here's the process that, that is followed to get through this, they have worked with the city, it still has to go through the necessary channels to get approved as a regular replat would.
But it doesn't solve a problem with that center area being basically a drainage ditch that's unusable by the park board, or anybody.
It's used to store water.
Well, used for water storage.
Yeah. It has to be.
There, there's endless lead to that from the street, and then that leads to the ditch on Wall Avenue, so you are gonna be able to do much else with it.
It's gonna become our responsibility to maintain that.
Yep.
How big are the lots?
Not sure yet, haven't gotten that far with the actual, sitting down with the engineer to go over.
They look similar to the size of the existing lots.
They might be a little bit bigger, but they'll need to be a little bit bigger.
These are fifty-eight feet wide, looks like, yeah, fifty-eight.
Utility use.
Maybe a little bit wider than that.
And so we'll have, yeah, we'll have to check all that, remember that too.
Then the park board will be selling the lots to, I guess, to a developer, right?
To, yeah, whichever developer wants, but they'll, they'll have to go through a public notice requirement, so let's put that out there, and they discussed, is that, they had a special meeting last Wednesday, actually, to go over this, and, and they're gonna do it by sealed bids. Do an auction style, sealed bids.
Are they gonna, do they sell them separately then, so somebody can bid on all four, or you can just bid on one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how they want to do that yet.
Whether they can sell one, maybe take one, two, three, four, they'll sell them all, four separate, I would think, and then they probably like, they sell finally, then they can lock them all together, and somebody wants to bid more for them all, it could happen.
Yeah, that's some logistics they can work out.
Correct.
You know, let's probably wanna do that.
This is, this agreement is just to say that, and you guys are aware of.
Yep, we're aware of it.
Aware of what's going on.
And we approve it.
I mean, essentially, we aren't gonna be able to use it for park space anyway, so this is a way to.
That's kind of why we're here.
Get the money back for specials that are in arrears.
Yeah, so the, so the park board will actually be responsible for paying the specials that are currently owed, so for the past three years, they'll have to pay that, so that's around twenty-seven thousand dollars, I believe.
Yep.
They'll have to pay that before we can report the plat, after that, all the specials that are still owed on the parcel will be distributed amongst the five lots.
But this, in essence, any money that they would give for the proceeds, we're essentially selling these back, right?
Cover that.
And they, they would cover that debt.
Correct.
And then some.
Is it ideal? Maybe not, but this is probably the best thing we've come up with, you know?
This, this thing has been a thorn in our side since the beginning, right, so.
That's right, that's why Lucas kind of came up with this idea, and we're used to pass the park board, saw, see what they said about it.
Yeah, personally, I don't, I mean, I don't really blame the park board too much for having, for taking issue with how the whole process went, and giving them this land in the first place, so it probably is the best outcome.
Dave, you gonna move?
Nope. So, I motion to accept this proposal.
Yeah, Dave makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 It passes, it's okay, Lucas, let's make it happen.
And I'll let the president of the park board know tomorrow, the city council through the agreement.
Sounds good, okay, Brent, you got the next one here, can you give me?
I'm gonna have Jim.
Jim do it.
Take the lead on this one.
If you could go to the memo that I sent out, and I assume they have it, Brent, right, uh, which one am I looking for?
Should be RTP, RTP plans, I sent you a couple, couple of plan sheet pages, just for the, get you the general idea, so. What we're talking about here is recreational trails grant, this is a constructed path from the existing path along Horus Elementary School, north to eighty-first Avenue. Yes, that's an avenue, uh, this is administered through the North Port of Park and Rec, so all we'll be looking for tonight is approval to go with them, they bid the project, the city doesn't bid it locally, it has some Title VI requirements that the city's not, isn't capable of, it's something that the Park and Rec has, so. Once again, we just have, it's constructed along the west side of the right-of-way, starting at the path by the Mount Hill Elementary School, working, meandering its way up to eighty-first Avenue. And then providing a place to cross it, Conroe Seventeen to the new Lakeview Drive, shared use path, which works its way into the school campus, so.
Jim, I forgot to ask you on this one, currently where this thing is gonna go, is it gonna go right over where the ATV trail is?
No, we, we moved it back up the slope, up the back slope a little bit to stay out of the bottom of the ditch where they've been riding the ATVs and stuff, I won't say that it won't cross, because we.
No, I got it.
We do have some spots where we tie into the roads where we have to.
Yeah.
Be within a certain distance of the stop signs and stuff like that, so I won't say there's not spots, uh, the one tricky spot is by the cemetery where we got a balloon out. We gotta try to construct, I should say try, we're gonna construct it along the edge of the road, and that'll take away where people have ridden their ATVs before, but. Um, that's kind of, there's not a lot of option there, it's pretty, pretty pinched right there, so.
Somebody asked that, and I guess I wasn't sure either, I was just trying to visualize where that was gonna be, cause you know.
You'll see here, it's further back, there is a removal of some trees that are between the trees and the next page, Brian? That's just my, just going. There we go, so right there, we were that, we tie into the existing shared use path, and we continue along to Chestnut Drive. And once we get to Chestnut, come back, continue along, and this is all on the back slope now, and then the next sheet takes us the rest of the way to the finish. And then we get down here, and right where we come up close to the road is where the cemetery is, and that's gonna be a pinch point no matter how we look at it.
Right, yep.
Um, and then we come up to Conroe Seventeen, and right there, we've got a crossing, the one thing that I wanted to bring up to you is that, um, we didn't have a. Crossing of Conroe Seventeen specified in the Lakeview Drive plans, and if we add it to this one, yes, this is grant money, so whatever we spend above and beyond is local, hundred percent local funds. So we can either add that into the other project where we've got the striping and all that, and keep it out of a one where we've got a limited budget on, or we could add it to this one, I could just put it, put a crossing there as part of this project, but. Um, I guess, is there any feeling on, on your part?
I would put it in the other project.
I, that's what, that's what my thought is to.
Keep this one easy, cause it's.
This one.
Don't complicate this one, I say.
It's limited funds, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there signage with the crossing and everything?
Um, there can be, we'll have to put up a, a crosswalk, I don't know if it'll be lighted or not, if the county's gonna wanna do that, if we wanna do that one, I think if we do, it's gonna be another, another one, similar to the crossing that's there, but I think it'd make it pedestrian activated. So that there's a button there that they have to physically push.
By the, by the cemetery there, where it comes out, a jog there, are we, are we dealing with county as well with that?
We are, and I mean, once I get your yes on this, I'm gonna meet with them, just to make sure that everything is kosher with them, being that, we, we are in the right-of-way, I told them about this project since we, since we started, that it's coming along, and, and. I told them I'd let them review them too when we're.
So you'll be reminding them, cause sure they'll have forgotten, that's fine, just making, just make sure that we're not stepping on toes here.
No. Question that I have is we, does that, are these trees that are on that burn right now, are they owned by the city, or are those the landowners?
Well, they're within the right-of-way, they're within the right-of-way, so they're.
Would they plant it as part of the development, I mean, the landowner here doesn't really own those trees, cause they're on the city. City, county slash side of the road, right?
Yep.
And this side, this side of that wood fence, it's their city maintains and most of that area anyway, right?
I don't. I believe so. Uh, the majority of those trees, if they're on in the right of way. I'm just gonna say most likely those are planted by homeowners. If we could avoid taking outside of those trees, we will.
It's like it's gonna be almost impossible to not.
We we this is, this is on paper. This isn't.
I know, but I'm just looking at how close it is to that.
What we have done in the past is we've been able to trim trees to, we trim them up so that they're out of the walking area. And it's not that close. There's a two foot clear zone on both sides of the path. So what's a ten foot wide path now becomes a fourteen foot wide area just so you don't.
Yeah.
There's clear zone works there.
And we can, it's their evergreens. It's really hard to trim those. I get it.
Yeah. So I'm, my discussion too with the county be if they would allow more trees to be put back in the right of way. And I don't know what their feeling is on that.
It's gonna be almost impossible to put them on this side because it's a ditch. They don't have to be.
They could be on the backside and they'd be smaller, smaller trees probably that and fit the organs. Yeah, I know. We have talked with one of the property owners and they were uh, already looking into putting more trees on. Inside part of their fence to comfort the.
If those are lost and they're. I mean, that was my first thought is we're gonna have upset residents now because some of those trees that they may have planted, are they gonna be upset about it?
Oh, and I understand that, that you want that, but it is right of way.
I get it.
If I put something in the right of way, it can get torn off.
Well, that's why I asked a question. Was it city owned or was it resident? If they paid to put them in, then we're gonna have an issue. If the city put them in as part of, or the developer put them in, when they put in development, that's a difference.
I'm just gonna come back to it. It's a right of way. If you're putting something in the right of way, I understand that. You can come back, not we, but anybody can come back and say we gotta put something in. We gotta do something.
If we're able, if we're able to work around a tree.
Yes.
And isn't prohibitive based on the engineering tied to it, we're gonna try and work around them. Because we know it keeps aesthetics of that area.
If it's a foot wide tree and we shoot it on this side, it gets drawn centered on that.
Okay.
So there's some of that that could get massage a little bit. I.
I'm just trying to minimize.
No, I, I know. I don't like it. Trees don't either.
So he wants.
Yeah, I have a question in regards to this. On eighty first Avenue, you're gonna have a crosswalk going across to, so the kids can get to the school, correct? Why don't you create a stop sign there? You know, so that these kids, if they're in the crosswalk, the car's gonna stop no matter what to protect them. Just like this, where he's concerned about the kids. Can you put a stop sign on that right there?
I'll visit with the county.
Slow down the traffic more in the school.
You're saying, you're saying eighty first or on right there?
Eighty first. I know, on seventeen?
Yeah. But I'm saying right here.
Yeah, where they're walking across.
Eighty first. Well, no, where the crosswalk is today, I mean, it's.
I understand where it's at today, but when you put this new one in, this is gonna go down to eighty first Avenue.
Yep. Yeah, that's that's you're saying is put a stop sign.
Make eighty first an all way. Make eighty first an all way stop. And I'll bring that up to the county and see what their thoughts are.
It's to protect the kids.
Yeah, right.
You know, I mean, a stop sign, I don't know if the county has to prove that.
Well, it's their road. We have to understand seventeen is their road. It's not us.
And they're evaluating some of the speeds on that too for post construction of the roundabout. So be a time to do it is now like.
Yeah, I get through seventeen to the roundabout where it's gonna be thousand kids going in there. So you would more slow it down with a stop sign.
And there's really, well, there's gonna be another bike path, right? Going on the east side of Casey's there. Isn't there gonna be a bike path back there? No. Maybe in the future.
Maybe in the future.
Okay. So this would be the normal path. You got four kids to get to the school on bike or walking. Okay.
Keeping them off.
Good suggestion.
We just need a motion now approving it and we'll go forward with uh, I'll get some, sit sit down with the county and then I'll get this information to the park and rec so they can get it out. This is a timely thing. We have to act on this June. We need to do some, something on it by June. So we can uh, keep our. Keep our activity.
Okay, Brian makes a motion and Dave does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, passes. Okay, good. Yeah, we'll get that done then, Jim. And we'll see if we can get this fired up. Great, get it done. Okay.
Brian, there are no attachments for this one.
Not this? Oh, because we got all this would be old. Okay.
Yeah. All right, so I'm tanning on our sheet here. Utility billing, late feature. Brent, what do you got on that one?
So what we're looking for is a discussion from the council uh, to consider late fees tied to utility bills. We currently don't apply late fees or have that structure in place, which is, we should. Uh, a lot, pretty much any other utility you think of has late fee structure that they follow. Been looking at different ways of where we could do a late fee structure. We could do a one fee for everything. However, however, in Horace. A lot of residents have different structures to their utility bills. We have some that have water, sewer, trash, forestry, vector. So everything uh, that Horace has is a utility. They have. We have others that have everything but water. We have others that have everything but water and sewer. So my suggestion for council to consider if we were to incorporate. Late fees would be to have a late fee tied to each of the utilities. That also allows us to very clearly. Know where to dedicate dollars tied to a delinquent account.
If someone is late, they can, and they, we aren't gonna charge them for garbage if they aren't receiving garbage or they're getting built out. Garbage from another way. So we can charge.
So they're only being charged a fee for the utility that they actually get. To give you an idea how much of a problem this is, in the ballpark, around thirty percent of the accounts are delinquent. That is very high.
Seriously?
Yes. Around thirty days. So it drops off significantly after that. But we need to have a procedure in place to where we're getting them in place. You know, saying, hey, if you're not paying your bill. Then you're gonna have a utility, you know, fee tied to it. Also, at a certain point, if you don't pay your water bill or trash. You're disconnected and there's a reconnect fee. A lot of cities I've seen before, ones where I've been before also. This number could be very high. I've seen anywhere from a ten dollar reconnect fee to a hundred dollar and more. I've seen a fees, one, one community where they had a incremental approach. So if you had to be shut off for water once your first time, it was a twenty five bucks. Your second time, maybe fifty dollars. And the third time, if you had to be shut off within a calendar year or within a one year period. If you had to be shut up a third time, your reconnect fee was in hundreds of dollars. My suggestion would be if we had to get to the point of a disconnect or reconnect those fee or, you know, reconnect fee. My suggestion would be fifty dollars. A lot of communities, I believe West Fargo was a hundred dollars. Uh, but it's a starting place. So.
It's basically the cost of dispatching someone to go out and just, you know, mobilize somebody to go out there and actually turn it back on.
It's to get, it's to get that delinquent account individual's attention, saying, pay your bills.
It is a straight fee.
Yes. So what my suggestion was in this, something for the council, it's a starting place is where do you guys feel comfortable with for a late fee? But each, so water, sewer and trash would have a five dollar late fee tied to them. And then forestry and vector would be twenty five cents. That would create, if you had all the services. Fifteen dollars and fifty cents of a late fee. To give you a comparison, West Fargo is ten dollars, but they're. You know, they'll shut you off at sixty days and that would be my suggestion too at, at a certain time period. Even if we do, say, three months, if you give even longer period of time, at three months, a delinquent account, you're shut off from that utility. And then the late fees will apply after thirty days of being delinquent. And then like I said, reconnect the fifty dollars. Uh, we can have that amended into the resolution of fees if the council like to do that. If you would like the fees to be different, we could do that too. Or if you have, uh, you wanna table this for more discussion later on, looking to see where the council sits. But as of right now, we don't have a method to.
To charge late fees. And with that number, we obviously have to get our records receivable under control. So there has to be some incentive. To drive these residents that aren't paying their bills and some people who just out of. Not, not that they don't have enough money, they're just, they forget about it. They ignore it, right?
Well, there are some folks that will pay, it it's just because we haven't had these fees before. Where they'll wait, you know, a month or two or a couple of months, then pay it. Or they'll try and make their monthly bill be a quarterly bill. And we're going towards monthly to make, to make sure the dollars are matching per month and we could.
Do I find that interesting that then we become the bank for them?
Yep, absolutely.
Somebody's bank.
Yeah.
They need to pay it. So in this scenario, what you're stating is if I didn't pay my bill within the next day, next time it was due, I would expect to see late fee. Plus my, even if I paid, even if I paid five days after that, I would still have the late fee, right? And then I'd still, if I paid, then my, my previous months would go away, but I'd still see the new four I. And then you're stating after ninety days would be when we potentially.
After ninety days of delinquency. So that really makes it where the person is about a hundred twenty days roughly.
Yep.
Uh, they would be shut off. They would get delinquency notice each month saying, hey, your account is delinquent. But after that certain point, after three months of being delinquent, then you would be shut off. Yes, and then you'd be subject to a fifty dollar or hundred, whatever reconnect fee that you'd like to have is. It's not intended to uh, punish or it's intended to. Get somebody's attention to, hey, pay your bill so we can move forward. You know, we have, we have to operate this utility.
But it's covering our costs too because we have to make either letters or phone calls, follow ups. And somebody's gotta go out there and you turn it off or turn it on. I mean, whatever, we're still incurring costs. And we don't have a money tree in the backyard to cover it. So.
Yep.
So um, because it's only sewer and water, I know, is it in the winter here, things like Excel or. For those guys can't turn off like electricity or heating, that kind of stuff, right? They can't disconnect people because of life safety things. Do we have any of that with water?
Uh, I know, I would say West Fargo does, at sixty days, you get shut off. And Lucas and I would double check the legal side of that. But if there are winter months, it would just be. You wouldn't shut them off completely for water. You would throttle the water flow back to where you could still get water. It's just. You're going to get, you're not gonna have that full flow.
Okay.
Of water to do everything you need, but you still have water to drink and.
How many people are past two sixty days?
I would have to pull the report to know exactly. I, we were looking at a couple of months there and I was just looking at the dollar amount. Uh, the dollar amount on the last months was thirty days was around thirteen thousand dollars worth of delinquency. And then uh, what we had for sixty days was around five thousand and ninety days was around three or four thousand. I was just looking at the dollar amount, not the number.
If it's somewhere around thirty percent, that means it's over a hundred people.
Yeah.
Which is a lot. That's a lot then.
We, we might need to recruit Dave's service help a little bit.
If it's sixty days past two.
Yeah.
You send them a notice and if they're not paid, they're ninety days to shut off. Because I don't think you need to give them a hundred twenty days because you guys need this revenue.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
I think that, I, I was gonna say, I think I need to.
You know, we notify them on their bill that they're delinquent. They see this extra charge, right? And in sixty days, we send them a letter and then ninety days, oh, that's it's done. The challenge is gonna be ninety days. Okay, if it's like you say, if it's in the wintertime, yeah, good luck finding that waterhead to go. It's hard enough to find much in the summertime, much less in the wintertime. Except bloody things gonna be buried.
And and now to make those people who just, not make, but for the people that just pay quarterly, we have automatic withdrawal. You can do ACH.
Right.
And it can be set up monthly, quarterly, however you do. So it's automatic. And we do offer now credit cards and everything. So we're, there's no barriers to get.
Right.
Your bill paid. So we should be, I agree, we should be starting that push.
Yep, great.
So would you like to go with the five dollars for water, sewer, trash and twenty five for forestry? Or do you wanna do a different amount? Go with those?
Let's start with that and see what we're dealing with.
Yep, and we could do, we do it by resolution.
That's my resolution.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You gotta start a point in place and then work from there.
See what we're dealing with. And we give everybody a sixty day notice that late fees will be instituted at a certain point in time.
For any of those people that are over sixty days, they get a letter basically immediately.
Yep.
Telling them, all right, get your, get your account up, caught up.
Well, it is their account, their statement is flagged. So I. It'll have something called their attention saying that it's delinquent and myself, you know, needs to be paid by a certain time or additional fees could apply.
Okay.
So, yeah. So what I have on here is for water, sewer, trash would be five dollars each. And then forestry vector twenty five cents.
Yeah.
And then a reconnect fee of fifty dollars. And water, trash, they can be shut off after ninety days of delinquency. Late fees apply after thirty days of delinquency.
So.
So I guess.
Trying to be devil's advocate here.
Yeah.
Okay, if we, if we put this in place and we have to shut somebody off.
They would still be three months out.
Curb stop breaks. Because that curb stop has never been exercised ever. Um, as we well know, right, Jim? So I'm a little concerned that the fifty dollars is, we're gonna end up incurring more costs. Because it's gonna end up breaking or doing something we didn't anticipate. I don't know. What do you think?
So we are experimenting with new, the new meters that are the allies that have the ability to be remotely shut off.
I mean, that, that would be the best case scenario.
Yep, and they have a partial flow, a full flow and a no flow type of setting on it. And that is done independent of the curb stop.
Oh, that's the ally give us that ability. Yes.
For where we can have a curb stop. Yeah, so this was relatively new technology at the time when we replaced them water meters. Very expensive in comparison to a standard water meter, but there are some placed as a trial throughout the city just to kinda get a feel for how they operate.
We have some, but I mean, that isn't the standard going forward for all new homes, is it?
Not right now, no.
It's still the census.
It's still the eye pearls, yeah. And the allies are census meters. We, we will likely have a few instances where a curb stop could be an issue. But in reality, once you start applying penalties and fees to delinquent accounts, uh, what I've noticed is that. They normally get caught up. Majority of the accounts would get caught up.
Right.
Uh.
Well, let's, let's keep monitoring. So let's put this in place and then we'll continue to monitor. So next meeting, we will probably get the resolution that we approve.
Well, you could approve us to update that resolution with.
So you're just gonna draft it based on the language we'll be agreed upon.
Yes.
So then. So I'm speaking from our side where I only get trash about forestry and vector. I only get a quarterly bill. I know you had referenced this. Are we gonna start that moving to a monthly bill for those guys? Because otherwise, if I'm late, you're only charging me five bucks.
Yeah, we are.
Month and before I pay again, I'm already three days late.
We are transitioning to a monthly.
Okay.
That way it's easier to cross check um, utility billings. And also to apply, you know, if there's fees that need to be applicable or anything like that, we would switch to a monthly. So we'd be coming out with that within the horse avenues saying, hey, here are some of the changes going on. Uh, it's, you know, it's also we have the, we changed how we do utility billing to where it's more of a letter head format. Uh, that allows us to get communication out too. So we could identify these changes uh, that way too. So folks are aware. This, you know, these are coming.
So I guess the question is, is a five, if all I got is trash and the other two, that's five fifty a month, is that enough and an incentive for me to get my?
But there again, it's probably in the neighborhood of ten, ten percent. No, it's more than ten percent. Their bill is probably closer to twenty percent.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Does, does, does West Fargo or Fargo do just a flat X dollars?
It's a flat ten dollars. So, but.
Flat ten dollars total.
Yeah, but what, West Fargo has a lot more of their customers are. Pretty much all the different, you know.
Yeah, everybody.
They have at least waters. Yeah, they have more, they're more of their customers have all the utilities that they have.
I guess start it like, like Brent said, let's just start here as a starting point. If we have to adjust, we'll adjust.
Yeah, we'll see how it works out. I mean, that's kinda what we're trying to do. We're experimenting a little bit.
Yep. So then we'd need a, if you're comfortable with that, what I read off, like I said, five for sewer, water and trash, twenty five for stream vector. It'd be a monthly late fee. Water and trash could be shut off after ninety days of delinquency. Late fees would apply after thirty days of delinquent. And a reconnect fee is fifty dollars. And that would apply for water or trash.
When would we set the effective date?
Maybe you're gonna have to get a resolution update by next meeting, so.
Well, like I said, we can update the resolution.
We can do it tonight, it's just we gotta decide when we wanna.
Do we want to put the late fees into effect June one, July one? Probably need some notification with residents before we put it in place.
That's just July.
Say, let's go for July, that way we get notifications out there, what's gonna happen.
So make a motion to apply the resolution changes.
I just wondered if you should wait till the residue is actually done, that way you have resolution on here?
You, you could do that, you could table it too.
To do this, just so it puts the public on notice that.
But I mean, they should be able, you should be able to bring the resolution by next meet, yeah, to the resolution.
That's fairly simple, Lucas and I have touched base on that, so it'd be fairly easy to update that. So what we'll do is we'll update the resolution and present that next meeting, and it would be.
July one would still be reasonable, wouldn't it, Lucas?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we still could start the notification process now, or do we have to wait till after it's approved? Let people know.
You'd have to wait till it's approved.
Okay.
Who's sending out the June bill?
Okay, so we'll have a month.
Yep.
Hope you're all right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that one?
Nope.
Okay. All right, Brent, Lucas, you are up on the roundabout utility agreement number eleven.
Hey, I'll touch base really briefly, and then if you do wanna expand any items on the utility agreements. Um, what you have for you is for two different utility agreements, one is for fifteen thousand dollars. And the other one is tied to twelve thousand five hundred, I believe. And these agreements are with utility companies, um, Cass County Electric Co-op, and then Consolidated Communications. Uh, both of them have utilities within the rightway along seventy-six and, uh, County Road seventeen. However, we do not have franchise agreements that exempt us from paying for costs of relocations. This is an area that, uh, Lucas and I are looking into of establishing franchise agreements with utilities that don't have agreements with the city, and also, um, ones that need to be updated, for example, Cass County Electric Co-op, they have one that is, I, I believe it's piggybacked off of another utility. And, or the previous utility operator that operated within here, I believe it was NSP, Northern States Power, and obviously Northern States Power doesn't have any more for our area. Um, so we're going through that process of updating these franchise agreements, however, we need to have the utilities moved in order for the project to move forward. So the utility companies are asking for, uh, compensation to cover those costs. It would be reflected as a cost tied to the project, but I felt it would be most appropriate to bring these forth to the council, so you're aware of these agreements, and also to let you know, this is an area that Mr. Crocker and I are looking towards trying to get franchise agreements with these different utilities, um, and update the ones that we have. Also, you can do it, what we're looking at is, how can we charge a franchise fee? So typically, a fran- franchise fee would be almost like a utility renting space, or just they pay a fee in order to be able to exist in your rightway. Um, and then also updating those agreements to where potentially in the future, we wouldn't have some of these expenses. It would be protected by an agreement, and all the county has that on some of their county roads. But we don't have them on, on ours, so, like I said, working with them. Some of the utilities have said they would cover the costs. So to give you an example, Excel Energy, they are covering theirs, they notified us that they would be covering their costs to relocation. And this would go towards the project, seventy-six.
So what if we say no to these?
Pardon?
What if we say no, we're not, you're not, you can't reimburse us because they are in the rightway.
Cause I'm almost positive there's a central code provision or statute that says that they have to have a franchise agreement with the city before they can even install improvements in the city's rightaway, so it was a discussion that we had of, do we go after them for that? Say, well, you don't have a franchise agreement to even be here, so I'll let you just go ahead and move it.
Cause I guess the question is, is when you look at where these are at.
Yep.
Seventy-six is a county road.
But seventy-six.
Going west, right, is a county road.
Yes.
And if you look at Cass County or Makota, whoever it states, they're moving a guide wire and a pole on the west side of the road, and they're moving some on the east.
Yep.
So that's the county side, and you stated the county already has an agreement, so where's our cost?
My understanding is the county has an agreement, um, but like I said, do we wanna hold up the project or not, if we, or potential holding the project up? That's the, that's the, that's the downfall of it.
Why would that hold up the project?
If they can't move a utility in order for the construction work to occur.
This is really a negotiation point for them to say, well, you need to move it. Now it's a matter of who's actually paying the bill for moving it.
Yep.
Number one, you didn't have, you didn't come and get the proper permits with the city.
Yep.
But there again, we don't know if we, if the conversation was such that we made them aware that there were even fees that applied to them.
This, this could have been also existing, I don't know the history tied to this of when the city annexed.
If they were.
This area, if they are already existing.
Oh.
I don't know if they were gonna wrestle with it, so, yeah.
When, when they put the, uh, two cable companies, put their, their their equipment in on the north side of seventy-six avenue, one of them put it into my utility easement on my property, which is where it should be. One of them put it down right next to the road. And they're the ones who have already replaced it, they've already bet up. Tunnel that replaced that utility, the rest of them are in the utility easement of our lots out there. Which means along the road, they don't have to move, except for the one that put it into right next to the road.
So it's their mistake.
Well, yeah, if they didn't have an agreement that lets them do that, but otherwise, yeah, everything else has gone into the.
Where it's supposed to be placed.
Where it's supposed to be placed.
Well, we don't know that situation here. Right?
Well, they're referencing in the, if you look at the, like, there, you have it up there, they're stating what they're going to do.
And we have not had a problem with many of the other utilities moving.
My side is, this is, the west side of the road is county, so if they have the county agreement, why does the cost come to us? On the east side, I know that's our road, so that you might bait that. And if they're doing it on, which they have another reference on, they write on seventeen, again, that's a county road, why are we paying?
I totally agree with you, David.
Yep.
I mean, you gotta negotiate, instead of just kinda saying, yeah, we'll do it. Say, hey, you know, Charlie can find a couple thousand bucks, but by gosh, you guys gotta get it done.
Well, it's almost thirty-five, thirty thousand dollars for this mess, correct?
I, I, I hope this doesn't hook up anything at this point.
I, I don't know, we have, we have a meeting tomorrow with the contractor, a weekly progress meeting, and we can address it there, but there was a utility coordination meeting held with the county, they were the designers on the project, this was held months ago, prior to bidding. And had all the utilities in the room, they went through all the conflicts that the utilities had, and here we are digging, turning dirt, and then how it's, we need to reimburse for this.
So, who raised it? Who raised it, was a utility company that raised it, or was it the contractor?
Raise what?
Raise.
These are from the utilities.
These are the utility company.
So what we'll do is we'll bring it back to the utilities and say that we don't believe that we should be paying this, we wanna make sure you're aware of this too, so and we'll, uh, Jim and I will discuss with them what the conflict may be, and if it has to come back to council or not.
We need, we need to figure out too, if there was an agreement with the county for when these were installed, because if, if that's the case.
I mean, it's, it's part of the, that was the, their opportunity to bring this up at that utility conference meeting.
That's another one, yeah.
Catch it then, that's, it's on them, it's not on us, it's not like we missed on them.
And some of it is, if it's convenience for them, being that if a line would break under the road, and they don't wanna have to remove the road to get it, they have to put a line in anyways, that's what I kinda struggle with, is that they're, they're moving it for their convenience. And I'm not sure that they are, I know the poles and stuff are obviously in the way, that's pretty obvious.
Right, right.
I mean, we've got utility, or private utility crossings all over the place on roads, I mean, they bore underneath them, dig through them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I. If there's poles, one less pole, you have to rip off the ice storms.
Yeah.
That's not what they're doing though, in this example, right, they're, they're just moving the poles, or are they going under?
They're moving them, yeah, I don't think that they're, they get out of their ground.
The rest of that system is above ground.
Right, right, okay.
Lot of these are right, you know, some of these, like the one with the utility poles, the rightway is changing.
Understand.
So, or the uti- the utility easement is changing.
Right.
So they have to shift over, uh, but being in proximity with the county, and based on what they show, we'll we'll bring it back up with them and come back to the council if needed, so. Yep.
All right, so we're done with eleven, then we'll move on to twelve.
Okay, the next one, this one is tied to the easements, or the rightway purchase for the northeast corner of County Road seventeen, seventy-six is point zero three acres. So a very small amount.
Is there, there's nothing to go here?
Uh, don't believe it, well, it would be purchase agreement McKinnis, and then seventeen, seventy-six, if you do wanna see the actual greenness. Um, but the first one, northeast corner is McKinnis, is point zero three acres, it's a very small triangle shaped portion of land, if you go, I believe it's the last page, shows the exhibit tied to it, yeah, right there. Oh, that one is the other one. Uh, but anyways, it's purchased for the rightway needed for the roundabout construction. This other one is point one eight acres, this is with seventeen, seventy-six investments. It is for the rightway for the roundabout, and then you can see the property, uh, it runs along seventy-six. That would be for the, one of the additional lanes. We focused on rightway for the southern portion of the project, so the road actually where all, majority of the rightway needed is on the southern side. The reason why is because of the school development, we were able to get land dedications on this, on the school side. We're not interfering, interfering with households as much by being on the south side. And then also future development, such as Cub Creek, we're able to get land dedications off from that also. We will have two other properties that we need rightway, uh, purchase agreements for. But this one is point one eight acres of commercial land, so it is zoned, commercial, uh, platted. That came out to three twenty-five a square foot. The other one was residential, potential growing up, and that, or going to a commercial due location. And that came out to a dollar seventy-five for a square foot. Uh, both of these parties have verbally agreed to the purchase. Uh, if council is comfortable with these, then we can proceed with the purchase of that rightway. Uh, the county has handled the purchase of rightway on the west side of the roundabout. So dealing with the substation in Makota, uh, the county was working with them, and then one, one other property owner. So our responsibility is to do east side of the project, and then along seventy-six. Uh, those other two were beginning negotiations on rightway with them here very shortly, but we wanted to get the roundabout done first. That was our priority. Uh, comparison for prices, these are, uh, fairly reasonable. Uh, in talking with the county, the three twenty-five for a square foot is very good. Uh, they bought property years ago for around three dollars a square foot in horse, and I mean, we're talking seven to ten years ago, is when they bought property at that price, so this is a very good purchase price of that. Um, and like I said, we're trying to get this acquired, so we can move forward with the project. This would be a cost tied to the project also.
Yeah, we had estimated land acquisition fees in the original, uh, estimates for the project. So, um, by a lot, by getting the dedication from the Cub Creek First Edition, saved a lot of money. When you look at, that was a much longer stretch than these little bits and pieces here, so.
So these, these costs are already in our project.
Yes, yeah, and the same with the school, that's kinda the reason it would shift to south, cause the school taking such a large area on the south side and saying, yes, we'll dedicate that to you, it just made it more economical to, to do that, and work through it that way. So, we do have a limited number in the, in the estimate for land acquisition, so it's not like an open checkbook, but.
But this is, this is the immediate ones for the roundabouts, there, there may be a few other smaller ones.
There'll, there'll be, there's two more that we're, where Brett was working on.
Yep. We were waiting for one for sale property to be finished, so we didn't deal with clouding up that property. And then the other one is the property adjacent to us, that we're going to be approaching them here fairly shortly to talk about. We wanted to get the roundabout done in the first, so like I said, that was highest priority, so.
Anybody got any other question, or otherwise, maintain a motion to.
I know that we accept the purchase agreements I've stated that we need.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, can you get a second?
Second.
You have a second, we were doing land acquisition, we'll call, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question, where does this money come from, your general fund?
This is tied to the bond.
There's, there's a line item, there's a line item in the overall business allocation.
You already got a temporary bond in place, making fun of this stuff?
The temporary bond is being finalized right now.
Phone calls in tomorrow.
So in other words, you're not gonna advance this money until?
Not until, the, the agreement won't be signed until the money is available to be handled, so.
Okay, so I'll move on to thirteen here, the letter of credit requirements for subdivisions. Brent, Lucas, if you wanna guys pick that up.
Lucas, you.
I can take this up.
I'll have Luke stick it right on this.
So at your last meeting, you, um, approved that resolution to increase the letter of credit requirement from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. The reason that this is on the agenda now is because there's a question on the developments that were already in place, and that we created improvement districts for. Does that apply, or does the fifty percent still apply to those developments? So the, the three that come to mind are, uh, Visto, Third Edition was already done. Already created the improvement district was, Cub Creek was, and then Maple Lake Estates was already created. Um, so it's a, it's a policy decision, it's up to the city council, if you wanna stick with the fifty percent for those developments. Um, any new ones, it'll bump up to seventy-five percent.
Well, the challenge is we change the requirement after we've essentially approved part of it, right?
We haven't approved the, we haven't approved the developers' agreement, have we?
No.
I mean, this is a policy, to me, it's put in place instantly, and these should.
No, okay, here's part of the deal though, this is, these guys, when they got to this point or beyond, they've already gotten their financing in place, all right? What happened here is, uh, being there toward the end of the show here, they've already got their funding in place, and this would be a burden on these particular ones to get that letter of credit changed.
We're changing the rules on it, we're changing the rules on it.
Exactly, that's me, future developments, I have no problem with that, but these guys were in play.
It's a letter of credit, it, it's not that they have this funding sitting somewhere, it's that they have the ability to buy this kind of funding.
Yeah, but.
You still have to come up with it.
I understand, but we didn't double it.
Hmm, doesn't matter, we're still changing the rest of the games that have been played.
And we make policy changes all the time, you get, your rates go up on things all the time, I mean, I know it's dollars.
But your grandfather, your typically grandfather in those agreements that are already in place, or have started.
That's the point, we haven't signed a developers' agreement on these, correct?
Correct.
Developer agreements have not been signed yet.
And they have not been finalized, they're actually next on the agenda.
They're on the agenda.
So you're saying that's what we're gonna do next?
That would be brought to the council.
All right, well, that's my opinion, I, I can understand, I've overwritten that, I guess, it's fun.
I don't really, I guess, know exactly how hard it would be for them, so it's a little difficult to say. Um, you know, strongly one side or the other for me, um, because I've never gone through that process. Because I've never gone through that process before, but to me, I feel like if we're gonna come back at this point to them when they're trying to move forward, if it was an issue, I think that would be a little unfair.
I'm not swearing out with this. As we go forward, definitely, but at this stage of the game, I don't think that's really fair to sit and try and impose that on these, on this, at this juncture.
This is a policy decision, so we leave it to, to the city council to tell us what, what you guys wanna do with this.
How much infrastructure is these three projects taking up in total improvement cost? Like Visto, they did their program three million dollars, two million dollars.
Two million.
Two million.
Two million, what's the other ones?
Uh, Cub Creek is in the six, six and then Maple's in four and a half million, so they're sizable.
So they would have to come up with another, you know, they've.
They gotta come up with a commitment of a letter of credit.
I mean, to your point, to your point Chelsea, it's, we don't know what their size of the organization, it may not be an issue for them. For others who are like, okay, we don't know if, if it would put them in a tough position where all of a sudden now they have to go back and get more letter, larger letter of credit.
You're protecting the city with that letter of credit.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I know. But, you know, they operate under the assumption with the rules that are in place today. And right when we're ready to approve their developer's agreement, we change the rules on it.
Which I don't think is fair. I understand it's trying to protect the city, but I don't believe that.
Right? If you were trying to push this through.
If I didn't have the developments that agreement signed, because it's still in the process. But I'm not in the city council, so do whatever you want.
My, my opinion is this is part of being in the developer. This is a risk. He gets all, they get all the upside. And I have no problem with them getting all the upside, all that type of stuff, but this is a cost of doing development. And the goal of us as a city is to try and reduce our risk. And we didn't ask them for a hundred percent. We asked them for another level, so. But I, I can understand. I mean, I'll, I'll vote it on this, so.
I mean, it's no, it's, on one hand, if we say, okay, well, let's table this conversation. And the next items are to approve their developer's agreement. All of a sudden now it's like it's slitting under the wire, right?
Yeah, I kinda feel like it makes us look bad a little bit, you know, we just, we agreed on this like one or two meetings ago and then we're implementing it so quickly onto them and.
So I guess the question is, for the developers in question, do we feel that we're taking on, on new risk? If we leave it as it is, because it, it becomes a risk question. To your point, it's, it's like, okay, if we're taking on too much risk and we feel like, alright, this is, this is dangerous for us and we should put it in place, then I think it would make sense for us to do that. But if these developers are fairly well funded already, that it isn't putting us under a tremendous amount of risk. Then, but we, then we could set these ground rules for everyone going forward, but we'll let these three go through.
But you just stated, you just kinda talked out of both sides of your mouth, because you said they're fairly well funded, but you guys are saying that you're, we're gonna put a burden on them for adding another twenty-five percent.
But do we know, we don't know that. We don't know that. But that's why I'm asking the question. Do we know if they're well funded so that we are not taking on?
We don't make, we'd be making assumptions at that point, but it's not.
Well, that's, I mean, we don't know that answer. If, if these, any of these developers.
No, we, we don't. We'd have to go ask.
Well, they, yeah, they provide the documentation to get their letter of credit.
But they're gonna put, you know they're gonna push back. I would push back too. I understand that's, you know, you're changing it at the end, but we're trying to reduce risk is all I'm getting at.
I think we do reducing it going forward. It's just this one, this one probably shouldn't.
I mean, Cub Creek isn't, they're not huge developments. I mean, I think there's a lot of interest in Visto. There's, you know, there's not a lot of commercial activity. There's, you know, those who will move, I feel like, you know, they'll move fairly quickly. You know, there's.
So does their line, at that, at that side, their line of credit decreases quickly then? As we go yearly review or whatever it is after certain portions are sold off and that, we're stating we will reduce the amount that you would have to have on credit.
So to get, to give a perspective of, the layer of credit discussion has been, has occurred a few times with the city council at least. Since I've been hearing those come up a couple of times. There was, oh, I wanna say it was around October last year, we actually looked into, do we increase layer credit? Do we do a moratorium until the comprehensive plan is in place or the future land use is in place? I know the council, the council did not feel comfortable doing the moratorium. The layer of credit was an avenue we were looking, still looking at. And that's why it came back up here a couple of meetings ago of increasing that layer of credit. The layer of credit discussion was going anywhere from sixty percent all the way up to like eighty or eighty-five percent layer of credit. I believe we went with seventy-five percent a couple of meetings ago for this requirement. But this question has occurred a few times with this council within the past six months or so. And also in interacting with developers, we have been up, you know, knowing fine developers, hey, this is a discussion item. So it is of concern to the council, but no action was taken during their process of, hey, if they come to us saying, hey, we're looking at doing development. We do bring that up when we can. So it has been brought up to some of these, to some of these developers of, this may change. I can't tell you a timeline of when it would though, and that, so.
So you've had that conversation?
With, with, with one of them, I, I personally have had that conversation with. Another one, I don't recall if we've had that conversation with them or not.
I'd just say let's, let's vote whether we grant them or not and come up with a settlement.
It'd be up to council where you'd wanna go. Uh, it does, does relieve risk when you're bonding that kinda money. It does relieve risk.
I mean, that, that's the whole reason why we're putting this letter of credit in place anyway. So it's, it's just a matter of, okay, we, we should have maybe pushed this a little harder earlier to, to force this topic so that we have this in place before these major projects were coming in. But under the circumstances, it is what it is and we're setting this going forward, but.
Well, just to add information to this discussion, I have sent drafts to the developers of the improvement district agreements and with a number of seventy-five percent. So I don't know if that throws a wrench into any of this.
Did you get any response from?
Well, I think that's why you guys are getting response.
So we're having this conversation.
Today from another one.
Yeah.
We had some conversations.
And so that's, that's why this is getting brought up is because the draft is out. If you have seventy-five percent in there.
If you do have some, all are going to ask for it. And at what point do you allow that fifty percent, or ones to get through a fifty percent and ones without, or ones at seventy-five?
These would be the only ones that get the fifty percent. Everything after this would go to seventy-five as per what we agreed on.
Cause, cause some developers would ask.
Are you talking Maple?
There's a third too.
There's a Maple Lake, right?
So all three of them right now would have a fifty percent requirement?
Right, cause that's what they've been, well.
Cause we're at the developer stage and getting them signed and getting it final, because we've approved everything else, right?
Everything is done to this point.
Well, Maple Lake Estates still needs to go through their final.
Their final plan has not been completed yet for Maple Lakes Estates, but.
How long is that up?
Well, that's why I don't have the agreement on the agenda tonight. It's not ready for that.
Yeah.
They're, they're making some adjustments. There had to be some side yard adjustments to Maple Lakes. And so Kent and I met and John and I have been on the phone about that all last week and they're being made, so it's just a matter of time before we get.
You still have an approval, that we still have a, a approval that has to go through planning and zoning and an approval that has to go through us too.
Planning and zoning is not.
That's a whole nother month you're looking at for that, then. I say you push back, William. If, if you're, if we're gonna debate this, then it's only those two that are at a development state, without signed development agreement.
Yeah, I can kinda see that.
I could go with that. Just take those two. Brian?
No, I have.
Okay, so, um, put together a motion to approve the Visto third and Cub Creek first addition. They stay at the fifty percent letter of credit.
Because they've been plotted.
They've, they've been plotted. Okay, or if you wanna change it, just say it, but that's something we wanna go with that and.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Chelsea has a second. Okay, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Gotcha. Okay, looking carries. Okay, so Lucas, you'll handle that?
Alright.
So now the next is we have to approve these, right?
Now we got one more thing we gotta take care of. Okay, alternate, Brent, you wanna?
No, no.
Well, the developer agreements.
That's coming later.
No, the developers' agreements are tied with the same.
Oh, you wanted to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He might not have gotten the updated agenda.
No, he hasn't.
He forgot a point.
You're okay? Proceed.
Uh, so the, so the next one that we have is the improvement district agreement for water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty nineteen dash five, which is Visto third industrial addition.
I'm sure, right?
Yeah, I update.
So this is our standard improvement district agreement that we have with developers. Just stating that they petitioned the city to install these projects. They want the city to create an improvement district and then assess the property for the improvements that are being installed in that development. Uh, we'll have to revise this to, uh, the letter of credit in this one to fifty percent. As is done in previous years. So for this development for Visto, uh, total project cost, the engineer's estimate of project cost was two million dollars. So their letter of credit requirement, um, will be one million dollars. So we'll have to provide that letter of credit to the city. Before the city will construct those improvements. And then section three says that the, the city is creating this improvement district, which the city has already done that.
Well, this one says one minute five hundred.
Yeah, I had it based on seventy-five percent.
Okay, so this one ought to be revised back to a million.
Correct. Uh, so section three just says that the city created this improvement district. Section four says what it means for an assessment to be in default. Um, se- section six says how the funds are dispersed. Seven is the developers' obligations. Uh, section eleven is, is interesting for this one. Uh, this gets into that waiver of protest. So if you go to section eleven, I'd like you guys to take a look at that one specifically. This was approved by motion of the city council on January twenty-second, twenty nineteen. And this was over your discussion with the streets being gravel. And then within five years or seven, upon seventy-five, uh, seventy percent of lots being sold, the city will create additional improvement district to pave the streets in that development. So what this section is saying is that the developer is aware that those discussions took place at the city council level and that the city, uh, had its turn to draft a waiver of protest that will be attached as exhibit B. And what that is, is when they sell lots in that development, that they will have the, the lot owner execute uh, and deliver that waiver of protest to the city saying that we acknowledge that when we're buying this property, we understand that the city is going to create this improvement district within five years to pave the streets in the city.
So this is just a template document that must be, so will you be the one that collects the protest letter? Are the developers responsible for collecting those protest letters from each of the tenants?
The developer is required to present that, uh, that waiver of protest, which is exhibit B, so it's in here right now to the lot owners. The lot owners are then responsible for filing that with the city.
Okay, so we, we, we hold that letter of protest to make sure that everyone, so that, that's part of the planning and zoning inspection to make sure that that protest letter is in place for all those tenants.
And at the least, what we have here is we have the developer acknowledging that this discussion was had with the city council and he agreed to it.
Right, I'm just worried about somebody being missed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, but can we read that section clearly?
What was it again?
Who pays for the paving after five years?
They do. The, all the property owners.
So it'd be a special assessment?
To that, but it doesn't state just paving there.
No, it's about the installment of the sewer line and piping.
So are you stating then, in that statement, then we're asking, we're gonna tell them that we're going from a gravel road with open ditches to now a true city street with curb gutter, all that? I was under the impression that was not what we were doing. We were just paving the road.
This was just paving.
I talked to city engineering and this is, you want? This is engineering. I thought that was needed, so, yeah, we could take help, but it's.
We had discussed that at one time of not allowing.
Correct, that was, that was, I'm not open for that, but I thought I kinda got beat out by that, that it was just, we were just gonna pave the road.
I raised the question when this developer agreement came out as to what the expectation was of their waiver of protest. What are they gonna protest out of? So, uh, you could certainly revisit it tonight. I mean, I know that we had talked about it being.
Well, I, I just wanna know is, have they, have they read this that that's what, cause that's not a, as Dave said, that's not a, you know, we're gonna add another ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars to your specials. We're gonna, it's gonna be fifty or sixty grand because we're putting in streets with curb and gutter and all that kinda stuff. Where versus we're just asphalt, that's all.
What you're reflecting of, it was for paving, that was what was.
That's what I thought we agreed upon, so I just wanna make sure that the statement is correct.
We can make that correction, it's just like the, the dollar for the layer of credit. We can make that to be reflective of paving and I could, I could work with Lucas on that part.
Yeah, because.
Cause otherwise, if we suddenly do that, you're gonna have a number of very, very mad owners.
Especially if you're going from a road that's, that's built up.
And it's gonna go down.
Because you can't get, you can't get there from here.
Right.
In a built up, or, well, you're seeing what's happening on my road.
Right.
What it's taking to take a road before you put a new one in.
Right.
Do we close the business?
Yeah, so, okay, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
So it is or isn't getting?
Just paving.
Just paving. Cause it was very, our estimate was substantial to go to a full urban section with curb and gutter and all worse.
Yes, it was.
Paul Kelly was blocking.
He was blocking, yeah, it, it, the, yes, it put it at the point where assessments that he felt it wouldn't be marketable at that.
Right, and that was.
Especially right out of the chute.
Yep. That's why we agreed just to do the paving.
So all I'm gonna take up then is, and install storm sewer piping, uh, and storm sewer structures. The ones that are needed are gonna be there first, right? That's all that's coming on.
Yeah, sanitary sewer, water, the culverts and all that, that's being done and that's part of the project that's up there, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. It has to be revised anyway. Um, so that was an important one. Section nine is important to the planning commission. Uh, that just says that because this, there is commercial and industrial zoning, that they have to present, uh, those designs to the planning commission for design approval. That was recently approved, I think, this winter. Second, section ten, they have to have landscaping in there. Eleven is the font paragraph that we just discussed. And the rest are general provisions. And then we get into, uh, exhibit B, that's that waiver of protest. And so it's, so that'll have to be revised because you're not doing curb and gutter?
Right, it would just be pavement of the roads, existing roads.
So this is the document, um, the exhibit B is the one that will be presented to the, to the individuals buying lots in that development.
Just that, you said you were gonna update that too, right?
I just looked at, it doesn't need to be updated. I just reading it.
Okay.
Before that's caused.
So it's paving it, but we're not putting a curb and gutter though?
Nope.
Right.
Uh, the clause that I was reading says, the city desired to install paved streets with curb and gutter. However, the developer requested that the city install aggregate streets, reduce the costs. So I'm just reading it too quick. So, uh, what, what I'd be requesting from the city council is to approve the improvement district agreement with the revisions that we discussed tonight, uh, that being reducing the letter of credit requirement, putting the letter of, uh, credit requirement at fifty percent, um, changing the the actual improvements that are going in with that second improvement district and then approving the, uh, and then approving the, uh, waiver of protest.
Okay.
So move.
Okay.
Set changes.
Probably make some motion, okay, give a second?
Second.
Chelsea do the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries on that one.
So I will revise that and then present it to the developer, and just let the developer know if the city approved it.
Okay, perfect. We got number two then here?
Yep, so the next one is, uh, same song and dance, but for Cub Creek addition.
Sure.
Um, this one does not have the kind of special provisions that the last one did with that waiver of protest. Um, again, this one will have to be revised from seventy-five percent down to fifty percent. And then, same sections that we discussed. Uh, nine is dealing with park dedication. Um, and that was approved by the city com- uh, that was approved by the city council to dedicate lot one, block six to the park district. So that's in there, that's, uh, of importance. Section ten deals with the water core setback on drain twenty-seven. Um, this will be revised, the Southeast Cass Water Resource District discussed this, uh, water core setback at their meeting last week at great length. Um, they actually limit more of what can be installed in an easement area, a one hundred fifty-foot easement area from drain twenty-seven. Uh, so the developer worked with Southeast Cass to basically over what, um, infrastructure can be installed in that, in that area. The city has the water core setback of one hundred fifty feet, that says no building or structure can be installed within that area. And so Southeast Cass piggybacked off of that, uh, requested easement from the developer, same as Visto, uh, also has. And so that'll be one hundred fifty feet as well, and then they layered it where another twenty feet closer to the drain, you can have certain other improvements. So you are aware, because one of your requirements was approval from Southeast Cass. So they did approve it based on, uh, a permanent easement agreement with the developer at their meeting last week.
And they actually placed greater restrictions?
Correct.
From the developer.
Okay, Russ, what do you got?
The one, one question I have, which we asked at the, uh, plan, was, our paving is gonna go down just beyond sixty-third, under the seventy-sixth avenue. They're adding a sixtieth avenue down there, that's gonna require paving, and, and their answer to me is unacceptable in that, well, they understood that the county was gonna pave, but, okay, somebody's gonna have to pave that road all the way down to sixty-first avenue. Sixty-second or sixty-street?
Street.
Sixty-street, sorry, sixty-street. Cause we're paving right now just beyond sixty-third, we're paving beyond the school.
Oh, so you're saying on seventy-sixth, the county's gonna have to do the additional pace?
So when Prairie View was developed in two thousand fifteen, Park Drive and Wall Avenue were extended to the entrance. At least to, yes, both of them were extended to the main entrance. Now with Carra Gardens going in on the east side of Prairie View, Wall Avenue and eighty-eight is getting extended to the first entrance, and so was Park, it's getting extended to the first entrance in there, so it's, it makes a hard surface to the, the development. Um, as you are well aware, that we didn't do that on one, and it's a...
Well, we did it to sixty-third, though. There's an entrance.
On a different development.
We didn't do that on a different, about sixty-third, which one?
Sixty-third street, I thought that's what you said, we're, we already did the extended. Seventy-sixth avenue is going down just beyond sixty-third. Right.
From sixty-third to sixtieth.
But we're adding a, we're adding a new street down, a new street down there, sixtyth. And someplace, you know, when they, and when, when you go to do the, uh, that's gotta get paved down the, down to that entrance.
On seventy-sixth is what you're saying.
On seventy-sixth, it's gotta get paved.
Yep.
And...
So the converse to that is you could take seventy-sixth to sixty-third to access this development. So it would be accessible by pavement, but it's, however you all want to go for that.
Yeah, you're not just gonna slap some asphalt down, would you?
Would, would, what was it?
Like, we have all that con- we did concrete on seventy-sixth, so then...
So as part of, from the discussion we've had with the county, when the county improves that road going forward, it will be a mimic of seventeen. It'll be widened on eight-foot shoulders and then to twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I don't remember which one, uh, driving lanes. So it'll have to be sliver widened and, and paved that way. Uh, Wall Avenue is being scarified, so basically what's happening there is they're just taking what's there, they're breaking it all up with a disc, relaying it down, and then putting, uh, I forget what the exact amount of gravel is or base material, and they're paving over top of that for, for Wall Avenue. So that doesn't have as big a section, as wide a section as what seventy-sixth would or could have. This has been, what was this, twenty twenty-one, they would have this done by, if I remember right, Brent?
I believe so, but we're, we're trying to work with them to get it pushed up, the pavement.
So this has been identified by the highway department as a project to do.
County to pave going out to forty-fifth. They've identified it as their timeline would be twenty twenty-one, but we have been trying to encourage that to occur sooner than later.
So I don't know what the typical section is out there right now, and if what we could fit on the top of it for a paved section, if we'd be able to just shape it, put a little base on there, and ma- and make a twenty-four-foot wide top on it. I'm, I'm not sure what it is right now as far as, but if you, if you can't fit it on, then you have to widen it out, and then it's, um, it gets to be a good bulk project.
But to your point, Russ, I think that's the, the core issue, is that there is a plan right now to pave the rest of that out to forty-fifth. So yes, there is a section right now that shows that would be in gravel for maybe a year. And then it would be, the intent is, working with the county, to pave the rest of that out to forty-fifth and out. By the time you get to it, you're gonna have to do some major work to bring that gravel off. It's, 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 it's being destroyed every day, that section of the road. Well, that, that's just a factor of the construction that's going on today. Yes, it is. So. And it'd have to do something with the road. Doesn't it? That's, that's gonna continue over the next two years, as that development contin- you know, the school development continues to happen.
Right.
No. No, because construction, people will no longer be on that road other than for concrete.
Cause there's a school, they have a temporary.
We're talking east of the school.
The school, the school's gonna have full concrete.
You're just talking a section from sixty-third to sixtieth, that's gonna be gravel right now, you would like to make sure that that's paved.
The drain, right.
Anyway, I just, no, I don't think that the developer's agreement probably isn't the place to address it, but...
It's gotta be brought up somewhere, right?
It's gotta be brought up someplace.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that one?
Uh, section eleven discusses, uh, the landscape standard, which requires, uh, boulevard trees. Um, section twelve says that the developer is responsible for maintaining the property. What's that?
Does that state when trees can install?
No. Um, and the rest is just the general provisions. Petition for improvements is exhibit A. And exhibit B is the engineer's estimate of probable cause, uh, probable construction costs. And exhibit C is the boundary map.
What is the, in the landscaping, it talks about the single-family properties are not required to meet the proposed plant units?
They're not required to be plant units, but they are, the code says all streets must have boulevard trees. So we did require the developer to provide a boulevard tree plant.
And that would be installed by individual lot owners, right?
Yeah, typically they're issued with the, the part of getting the building permit is that, you, that's your boulevard tree planted, that's part of the deal.
Cause you can't have it before constructional home starts, cause the whole trees are gonna...
So like you don't get CO unless your tree is in, or?
It's a condition of building permit.
When did that get enacted?
That is kind of how the planning department was gonna go forward with it unless the developer agreement said otherwise.
So the single-family properties are not required, is that, um, in our planting requirements, or, I mean, there are, the boulevard trees are required, but the single-family isn't required?
That's under your ordinance.
It's, it's, they're separate things, yeah. So the, the tree unit is for, so it's like commercial developments have to provide a landscape plant, it's the framework for that plan. That boulevard tree thing is different.
Yeah, so residential lots are not part of the tree planting requirements?
Correct, yeah.
Though the trees on the lot, it's up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there will be sidewalks and so forth in this area, right?
Yeah, so the boulevard will have trees.
The boulevard will have trees. Those are required. It's up to the individual homeowner what they wanna do on their own lot. Right.
Do we, do we, down the road, are we gonna look at that at all, or is that not really necessary with the boulevards?
It's not in the, the scope of things that I have.
As long as we have the boulevard trees, it'll be covered.
Right, yeah, it's, it's, think, the, the, the code process here is so new that it's, let's do what's been working in the metro, and then move forward as it's time to move forward on things.
Okay, anything else? Get a motion to approve that?
So the, the, the seventy-five, so there were changes to this?
Yeah, so motion to approve those revisions.
With the revisions.
With stated revisions, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
To approve.
To set revisions.
Yeah, okay, Brian, give a second?
Second.
Chelsea, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, so now we're on fourteen now. Right? We need to, yeah.
Yeah, we're on fourteen now.
Okay.
Um, the slide in is alternate detour route, very popular topic, detour route.
Everybody loves it. Everybody loves it.
Is there, is there something to say?
No, no, there's not. Okay, this, this discussion. Um, like I said, the, we all know that the detour route is working for the seventy-sixth avenue project and roundabout. It isn't the most desirable, but is, you're able to get from point A to point B. Uh, what we found with, obviously with the rain, is that it has been a little slick at times, um, and sometimes muddy, that's working with the gravel road. Um, there are some areas that, or some folks that do not have as a very simple access for their detour, their detour is significantly longer than others. Uh, what we had been looking at is should there be a second detour route? That way, if conditions don't allow the current detour route to be used, uh, it'd also spread the traffic. The current detour route does take quite a bit of traffic. Uh, being out there today with, uh, Jim, we know it's quite a few vehicles going down that detour route. Um, it is being used, it's packed down pretty hard. But we have the option of doing a second detour route, which would be basically where Veterans Boulevard is, from Wall Avenue going up to sixty-fourth. What that would do is give us more north-south roads in town that are actually improved enough to navigate through even if we have inclement weather. Right now, those are minimal maintenance, it is a mud path. And when the conditions are dry, residents are using them. They are going through that when it's dry. But right now, it's a complete mess, and they are tearing up the maintenance road to wear in a month or two. That will make it more and more difficult to use. But if we were to do a one-mile stretch, one mile would be from seventy-sixth to sixty-fourth, and then a little bit to connect sixty-fourth, that was an improved road. That would be a cost of about a hundred sixty thousand dollars. To do the two-mile stretch would be around three hundred twenty to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But like I said, it would give us more options, the public would have opportunity to go another route, and also doesn't put all the traffic, detour traffic, on one road. So we're looking at the pros and cons, see where does the council stand on this? We recognize it does cost a bit, uh, we could fund, you know, we could put some of the cost towards the project, and cover the other costs towards, um, uh, the city sales tax, which we have for infrastructure. Uh, also our highway fund, we could cover some, some of that cost with the highway fund. So there are options, but we wanna throw it up for the council to consider, what route would you like to go? No pun intended on that, but...
So knowing that, uh, Wall, this way, is gonna get closed off, did you find out how long?
Couple weeks, you're...
Probably at the worst, it'll be a couple weeks.
Okay, so not very long in terms of those entrances and stuff?
It's not, it's not like a month-long, summer-long type of thing.
Which section of Wa- which section of Wall piece?
From Carra Gardens, yes.
Yeah, so from where the asphalt ends is the entrance to Prairie View.
Right.
To entrance into, into Carra, uh, Carra Gardens, yeah. The thing about this is that it gives us another avenue north and south that we don't currently have when the weather's like today. Like he said, we can use them in minimal maintenance road when it's dry, nice, but beyond that, you know, and those roads aren't, minimal maintenance roads aren't set to handle a ton of traffic either. You are gonna have issues with that. Um, does give another avenue for fire and rescue. Right now, there's not a good avenue for that for us, for our guys here. So, um, that's why we thought we'd bring this up for discussion tonight, guys.
Well, plus it's a, it's a good road if there's future construction.
Well, it will be.
Building up a road that we can use in the future as well.
Absolutely, I mean, that's just it.
So I don't see that as negative, and...
Well, we're putting it towards a road that will end up having to get rebuilt anyway.
Right, but at least it's not destroyed.
Okay, you know we don't own that road, alright?
Yeah, it would, it would require coordination with the city of Fargo, and they're okay of doing that too.
Okay.
Yep.
We'd get, we'd get written clarification, but nobody's complaining.
Yes.
Well, I'm only in favor of what you're talking about, but, but I just want you to know.
No, I know.
Yes.
That's not our, that's not...
That's not solely our road, you're right. But I don't think we're gonna get too much complaints, and we haven't in the past on that one, but, um, like I said, it does give us another avenue north and south, again, it's...
Well, even in the future, is the nice thing.
But, but it would, it would create a base, and we know those roads are gonna get improved.
Correct.
We, we do have similar dynamics of shared road. Uh, right now, Wall Avenue, for example, is some sandly township, some city of horse. So we've done improvements to Wall, for example, uh, the detour out road, or eighty-first street, go ahead, or, street, uh, or diversion road, that's more in township, actually. So we do share these improvements, and recognize that it would help, it would help benefit the area, but yeah, so we'd be coordinating.
It's just a formality, we have to go through, you're, you're right, Russ.
Yeah.
I think we need, I think we need to do it, cause you are driving considerable people way, way far.
Yeah, and like I said, we're, we're gonna be needing another route anyway, north and south, um...
Well, it'd be really nice if that minimal maintenance road to fifty-second was usable, so people didn't have to go, you know, back and around again. It's too big, but...
But in the meantime, get them on to sixty-fourth. Cause the sixty-fourth avenue will be improved at some point too, not too far out.
Do you see a lot of other people going this way just besides Edelman's, I mean, do you really need to do the whole? Does it make sense to do the whole thing rather than just the one mile?
If you do the whole, if you do the whole, you would get traffic throughout.
Cause everybody on, on...
Pretty much anybody on the east side of seventeen would, it would make more sense to go up that. It'd almost make more sense for quite a few households that are even east of the river to go, uh, up on the east side.
Well, but then, then you're basically pushing the majority of the traffic.
You're spreading the tra- you're spreading the traffic, yeah.
But now all of a sudden, if you do that, now you've got, you're doubling the cost of maintenance and upgrading it, and the dust control, and...
Yeah.
Yada, 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 so it's not just getting it in place, it's actually maintenance as well.
Yeah. It is maintaining, there is cost tied to that, obviously. Uh, we do have costs tied to maintaining seventy-six going out towards the front road off I twenty-nine. We've touching that, we're having Northern Perrin touch that up. We've touching that, we're having Northern Department touch that up as needed also, so we do have maintenance costs, it just spreads out where maintenance costs are, it's not all one, or it, it wouldn't be the same route as much.
But you're right, Brian, we're gonna spend extra coin once we get it goes in. I know about it, but when the, we're gonna be improving them at some point, if we don't do them now, we're still going to have to do the improvements at some point.
That's another three hundred thousand dollars that we don't have in the project and, and I need to start allocating funds that, the, the needs are great and.
Yep. We talked about thirty thousand of potential utility adjustments.
We're stretching the old budget.
Yep.
I mean, I suppose it's possible that, we pray that we don't have much contingency and we could use some of the contingency.
Well, like I said, and that, and that's why you have also the other funds, like the sales tax and the highways, so it's, like I said, it's bringing up to the council, making a tough decision on this, um.
Well, I know, I know it's gonna alleviate, there would be probably a lot of people that would like this route better because especially the Adamans folks and, cause their, their options are limited.
Even these guys on the east side of town too would be able to go that way as opposed to having to go that way. Um, yeah, it's, it's coming up to pay for it, I mean.
I mean, I, I could envision a lot of people actually preferring this route versus going out west, I mean that.
I, well, I just think it's, there's multiple benefits, yes, it's money we don't, you know, we're gonna have to spend it sooner or later, there is maintenance costs, there's all that kinda stuff, but it's a road that to me, this is a staged buildup then, we can get this on there, you can start creating a base, you can start getting that going and bring it in the future, in the, in the future, gonna build it up more, just even pave it, now you've got a a base that's been packed down, it's been those types of things, it'll defer a lot of people, um, you know, it gives those options that Adamans and Russ doesn't have to go, you know, two and a half miles that way and then up a road that even said portions of its dirt up to, up to Walmart and those types of things, so I mean.
Jimmy, if we pulled a pin on this tonight, how quickly could they be in play to you, if they, just give you an idea?
I would say they'd have to do within a week.
Really?
If the weather cooperates.
What's, yeah, I mean, I'm just, but I'm just talking a month or two or ten days type of thing.
Yeah, it was a month or.
We can bring it up tomorrow.
Month and a half that it's not worth it.
Right.
Almost recorded the way through.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
But I mean, if we're talking, we can do this within a timely fashion and that'll.
So is that all?
It took them about a week to do the, the mile from Sixty-Fourth down to Seventy-Sixth.
But I don't know when they could be on site, that's the thing.
Well, they're working on the roundabout right now.
So how much did that end up costing?
Hundred and sixty-one thousand.
For that mile?
So we're using, we're using bid prices, we're doing this, it's the numbers that they provide us, it's not a, it's, the only thing that's estimated is the quantity.
The only thing we have though, they are here, maybe have a piece of deviation, but they are here.
Yeah.
But they don't have all the trucks here.
Don't postpone the roundabout opening?
Well, that's, that's the thing I.
If that, if that was the postponement was for a week or two weeks, I would take that over everything, because you're alleviating some of the pain and those types of things, if we're, you know, you can make it up in other areas in terms of timing and, and again, weather is, it's crapshoot anyways, so we could suddenly have a week of pure rain and the roundabout does nothing for a week.
So there'll be some discussion with Fargo that has to be done, and then we'll talk to the contractor one morning at nine during our meeting about when they could get to it and kind of if they'd be willing to.
Yeah.
Do it.
If, if the council did want to proceed with this, my suggestion would be if you gave your blessing tied to it contingent upon the coordination with the, with, say, Fargo, uh, that would be the big one, and then we would work with the contractor to identify the timing and work with Fargo to make sure we have the okay.
I think we just have to get the plans to the engineers at Fargo so they know what we're doing and that's probably, that probably be it, cause they're not gonna block it that. No, there's another downside, you start opening up more land for development. So what's the trade-off? Help the residents get around town a little bit more or open the joint up?
I, I just want you.
No, you, I know.
You're just creating work for Russ now, unless.
Yeah, that's always the plan, it's more work.
I, I would. But you're right, I, I know that too, I, but, but it's.
No, that's not a downside truly.
That's actually.
But it's an accessibility issue from some of it or something. We, we know that, that we've always been clogged on north route transport and so this might, it was not happening, granted, we all come back together on Sixty, from Sixty-Fourth to Seventeen again, but.
For now.
Yeah, for now, I'm good, I'm just saying, until that can get improved up there, you know, which I hope it will happen soon, but.
MetroCOT is looking, is looking at a twenty-twenty for getting the planning on Veterans Boulevard South Fifty-Second.
I know.
Because with the diversion, they can use box culverts instead of bridges.
Uh, Drain Twenty-Seven?
Yes.
So they're putting a bridge at Fifty-Second right now, or they're putting big box culverts at Fifty-Second? Where they're on Fifty-Second?
I have the foggiest idea what they, what they're doing there, cause I haven't seen what they're doing.
Well, they're not tou, they're not touching the bridge yet, at Fifty-Second.
Well, the Drain Twenty-Seven.
I'm talking the Drain Twenty-Seven bridge.
Yeah, I believe it's.
Yeah, that's the one they're working on.
Yeah, I believe it's box culverts, but I'm not positive, so.
But, but there, there's if the policy committee passed what Detective Committee did, uh, there was a real line about some funding, which pulled a hundred fifty or a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars into next year before that stuff, starting next year.
It'd be awful good if the section's already somewhat done, right?
Yeah.
I guess my side would be is if we can get everything moving and you can get it going in a week to maybe a week and a half, and it takes them a week to get it done, any about a couple of weeks, but if this all, I mean, next thing you know, we're not till late June before we even start thinking about this.
The question is how many people are actually taking this route? This, isn't it approved route detour today? Granted, it's gonna offload some people off of Wall and Eighty-First, right? Well, maybe the, the reason I started using it was I saw all these people driving on this minimal maintenance road, so I got, I got low-wheel drive, I drive. Exactly, but that, that doesn't make it that it, it should be, right? For your area at least, most people are supposed to go either the front end or go south to One Hundred, right?
Could you still, you know, you'd have to get to the front end road to do it.
To get, to give you a comparison, on the current detour route, the detour reroutes traffic back to County Road Seventeen at Sixty-Fourth.
Yep.
A lot of traffic continues going north on Eighty-First Street to Fifty-Second to kick over, because West Fargo's detour starts at night, so it's more direct to go all the way up to Fifty-Second on Eighty-First.
I understand.
So what you're gonna see is.
We're spending three hundred thousand dollars for how many people that are actually going to be using it where.
It's hard to say.
Brian, you lost the video feed.
I'll just stop.
Yep.
There is a gravel road one mile east of there too.
Does it stop after so long?
There's a gravel road that, that goes south for one mile. That's Forty-Fifth.
Yep.
I didn't realize how little connectivity we had, and still, I, till I started looking away to avoid the front road going north.
Right, and that's.
Yeah.
Yep.
It, it at least gives you the connectivity, and that's the push of it, or the thought behind it is connectivity going north-south, cause we do not have that. We have very good connectivity east-west.
To give you an idea of how I came home from church yesterday, I drove down to One Hundred, I came over to County Road Seventeen, drove up to Horse, drove back to Forty-Fifth Avenue, you know, two miles east, came north a mile, and then and then two miles back to my house. Don't put this word in for me. Such a terrible.
That's the biggest complaint I hear, is the timing. Well, that's really the problem, is uh, peace.
So it's like going from Sixty-four to Fifty-Second.
Well, what do you suggest?
Just, don't do it tonight. Oh, yeah. I would love it if you did it tonight, don't do it tonight. Make this part of a bigger plan.
Yeah, I just feel like it's, it's a lot of money.
But then what you're stating is then, we're basically tabling this then.
You could table it.
If, 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 I, I would recommend that you do part of this as a bigger plan, because you're talking, the biggest benefit this is gonna be for is for uh, me and about eighteen to nineteen of my neighbors. That's the biggest benefit of this.
Yeah, yeah. The only other thing, Russ, was to try and take some traffic from going that way, bring them up Wall was that improvement there is taken care of and then up. That's why we're talking about the two-mile stretch, go up the east on the wall and then.
Well, I, I, I fully understand, and a lot of people would love it, but you have something in place that.
I mean, it does work, I get it, but.
Yes.
It's optimal, no?
If you do need more time to sit on it, or think about it, whatever you're in it, that could also be done, so it's one of those, it's where you guys.
Well, I have the opinion that if we sit on it, it's, we're just gonna take the complaints, that's all we're gonna do right now, and we're gonna have to focus on maintaining the road.
But people are, people are gonna get used to the route that they're on.
Yeah, that's what I, I think, it's either now, or we decide not to and we just maintain the current road, and we try and improve that, and do we do a little work to the current one, because it's really sloppy in front of River's edge?
Well, let's, let's have the discussions, let's have the discussions over the next two weeks with contractors, see what options there are.
We can get you a summary tomorrow, let's do.
So let's gather some more information and if we make the decision of.
How quickly Fargo will get some board is another story.
Well, I mean, that would be the other thing too.
And we, we bring this back to the next meeting to gather more information.
Okay, so let's do that, let's table it for the next meeting, then we can make an upper down at that point, we'll have all of our information.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Okay, we'll table it till next, next time. All right. Brent, you got the next one here too.
Okay, I'm going to be pretty quick on this, uh, partners and marketing grant, just a quick update for council. Uh, staff and council member Johnson have met, and I have met with A two S to see some of their potential logo designs, uh, we gave additional feedback and hope to have some potential new logos through the city brought to council at the next meeting. Uh, we were hoping to have that brought back, or brought to council tonight, but we weren't comfortable with the logo renderings that they had at the time yet, we wanted to see some more options, and we channeled their focus to a couple of specific areas where we had three different concepts and taglines and everything, we're channeling it down to one now. Um, so we're working on that, and like you mentioned with taglines too, we're trying to channel their focus down to very few, so we can come to council with some potential concepts. Uh, we expect that to occur very shortly. Um, they're currently looking into uh, possibilities of the marketing side, if we're able to incur costs upfront, and then have those marketing activities happen throughout the rest of the year. Due to our grant funding, we have to have all our requests for reimbursements, and, or all our expense activity has to occur before the end of June. So we have to have that done, occurred before the end of June, in order to be able to get reimbursed for the project from our grant, the partners and marketing grant from the State Department of Commerce. Uh, like I said, so they're looking into, can we pay for media or marketing upfront, which is looking like we'll be able to. Uh, we should have more details at the council meeting when we're going through locals also.
Okay, so next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Good. Okay, and the next one here?
Okay, the next, the next item is, I refer to as First Link, I'm gonna pull it up. Corey is probably more familiar with this than anybody in the room, it's my assumptions, but.
Which document?
It says First Link on there. To, summed up, first item of this is, First Link is a program with pretty much all the cities and local government, healthcare providers throughout the metro, um, and even a little farther outside of our metro, uh, within Cass County, Cass and Clay Counties, so Minnesota and North Dakota side. Uh, what they're trying to put together is, um, funding for a program, horse issue would be a thousand dollars a year for three years, uh, and this is to help with the cut down of opioids and alcohol abuse, uh, programs like that. So they're looking for participation from the city to help with the community addiction navigator program, to help fund education community on these efforts.
And this is, so they would do some programs, some education, so forth out here?
Within the region, the metro.
But some of this would come up here?
Possibly.
It could, it could.
There might, there might be some deals with the school, that's what I'm thinking, that's, when they, when they were initially talking about this, this initially was for the opioid addiction, when we started this thing, and we've expanded a little bit more because there's more than just the opioid issue. So with the expansion of that, cost increases a little bit, but again, we noticed that when we started this thing, and once everybody kinda got aware that the opioid addiction issues, they're there, but they have gone down, their, their doctors are not prescribing as many, and there's not quite as much as there used to be, I mean, it exists, don't say it's gone, but it's, it's not as much as it used to be. So trying to ride on that success a little bit, and see if we can get some of these other issues maybe help in that direction, like with alcohol and other illicit drugs that are going on. Try and take the lessons learned with the opioid issue and see if we can, you know, bring some of that forward, you know, it might be pie in the sky stuff, but you know, we can always try.
Well, that's the thing, for us right now, we don't, you know, they're saying the range of savings of Florida, eighteen dollars for every dollar spent, it's hard for us because we don't see those costs.
Correct, we don't.
Right, because we don't see the lost productivity, we don't see the, you know, um, yeah, just the overall impact and police protection that, that, for all these drug, yeah.
Yep.
But it's, it's somewhat melded into the metro area, but on the other hand, we benefit from having first responders, police protection, so forth from Cass Counties, who it makes sense for us to participate in something like this.
You know, and the other thing is that First Link is maintaining, you know, twenty-four seven, they've got a phone number you can dial, you know, somebody's into a situation where they feel like they've got an addiction and need to, somebody to talk to or whatever, there's a number on here, you know, and that's part of what this is about.
Something that would be something that we could advertise for our residents as well.
Absolutely.
Being a member of this, being a member of the community, so.
I mean, I think it's a good deal, you know.
I'm guessing the price reflects our size of town.
Pretty much, yeah.
It's not like.
Fargo's got the majority of this one.
Yeah, Fargo, Cass County, Clay County, Moorhead.
They've got the lion's share of the.
They're the main funders behind it, and then the other community.